If you would, uh, if you have anything to interject, this is a, this is a place that you can, you, we can have a conversation about this. Um, we're going to use PowerPoint and we're going to talk mainly about, uh, the wings today, but, uh, in looking at the wings, what we chatted or what Carl and I talked about was that it takes all of us, the whole team on the field to cover every, eh, eh, every area of the field. And there's only four, sometimes, sometimes there's five of us on the field. It, it's a, it's a lot of field, a lot of plays, a lot of activity for five guys to, to cover. So we all have to work together, but there are some keys that, that are looking. So this is sort of going to be wing centric today. Next, next week will be, uh, umpire centric. We're going to take the fourth of July week off. We're going to, uh, come back and do, uh, referee centric and then, um, back judge centric with special teams on the last day. And now we'll roll right into the state clinic. Um, and I will tell you that Carl and I, we, we looked at all of this stuff. We talked about rules. We talked about, um, how we wanted to do this and, and what we came back with was that this is a way to start getting us in the mode of being referees and, and officials for football and getting our brains working again. This is not going to be everything. You're not, we're not going to get everything in, in a four week session. There's no way. But this is a, a way to, to share with what tools that we use. Carl and I are, my friend Carl is what my son calls Carl because he goes, is that what your friend Carl? I go, yes, my friend Carl. Cause Carl and I talk two, three, four times a week during football. We're probably talking eight, nine times. We're, we're texting and talking all the time. So, uh, find a friend Carl, uh, for you. Um, because it's invaluable that you can bounce things off of. You can, you can talk about things. You can say, hey, did you see this? Or we look at this, um, and, and the greatest thing now is that we have huddle and video that we can share and we can talk about. And then interpret rules and, and how we look through that. So, um, find a friend Carl, cause he's, he's awesome, you know, uh, you can't have, you can't have my friend Carl, but, uh, Carl actually has a lot of, of friends. I'll, I'll be honest.
I thought we were exclusive, Carl.
See, see, as you have saying, so, um, but you know, the coolest thing, about all of this is that, um, we just get to share. So I'm, I'm, we're going to share some tools that we have. Um, I think the biggest thing that, that I also wanted to get across is definitions. And we're going to go over rule two definitions. If, if you don't get into anything else right now, just break open your rule book and go over rule two. Rule two will get you out of trouble. A lot of times. So if you have a clear definition on, on a hold or a clear definition on a player designation or a clear definition on a, on blocking, um, that way you can iterate that when you throw that flag and you want to talk to your white hat and tell them, report to your white hat what you have. Using those definitions will get you out of trouble with the coach also, uh, a lot of times. If you're able to tell him a definition or tell her a definition, it, it, it just is so helpful. So we're going to go over some definitions to start with. And right now I'm going to, I'll start sharing my, um, my screen. Uh, and, and open up our PowerPoint here and if you have anything to interject, if you have anything to, to share, please take yourself off mute, ask a question, um, share, uh, we're going to go through, uh, the order of the session will be, we're going to do rules, choose definitions. And it's not going to be, we're not going to go over all definitions. I, it'd be impossible. And, and we might not go over all definitions in, in the four sessions, but we're going to go over a lot of them. Um, and, and, and this could be a little boring, but just paying attention and understanding definitions would be, would be helpful. Then we'll do, uh, talk about some rules and study, study guides that, that I use and that Carl uses. We're going to go over test questions. We have a test bank of questions that are the federation pass test questions. Um, there's no guarantee that they'll be on the future test questions, but they are a bank. Um, and that also includes using the quiz app on, uh, the federation, uh, rules app that has quizzes. And then finally, we're going to do a huddle review. Um, so with that, that being said, um, I'm going to go right into it. So, um, rule two again is definitions. Uh, I always do a hard copy. Some people do, uh, um, the rules app on their phone. They can, um, they can search quickly on the, on the phone that way. Uh, and, and what have you. So we're going to talk about, uh, section two rules app. And I wanted to talk about blocking, um, specifically. So as a wing, our, our first, what, what are some of our first keys as wings is that we're going to figure out what, what receivers is our responsibility? And then we're going to look in interior to, to, towards the ball and we're, and we're looking for encroachment. And then also, but blocking involves all officials, uh, uh, eh, eh, we have blind side blocks. We have holds that can happen in midfield. That can be a DPI or an OPI. Um, we can have a, a legal block with the open hands. So, so some of the, the blockers, uh, techniques, and if you just look at rule two, section three and blocking, there's, there's, um, 10 articles that, that are part of it. Um, blocking is an obstruction in opponent by contacting him with any part of the blocker's body. We're just getting in the way if somebody is called, is considered blocking. Um, there's, there specifically goes into techniques of blocking, and this is what coaches should be teaching their players. There's the closed or cup hand technique with elbows inside and outside the, inside the shoulder pad. Um, there's also the open hand techniques, which is what we see most of. We see an open hand techniques, uh, in advance of the elbow. So the hands go out in front of the person, um, get into the rule book, go into article two, look at the different techniques of blockers. So, but article three talks about the blocker's hands may not be locked. I mean, and he may not swing, throw or flip an elbow or forearm, those moving faster than the blocker's shoulders. So now we're getting into what certain fouls are with these techniques. If they're, if they're getting ahead of themselves and they're throwing elbows, then that's not blocking. Um, they also may use in article four, uh, an offensive player may also use his hands or arms when he's a runner to ward off. The Heisman pose, um, during a kick to ward off an opponent who is attempting to block him or to push, pull or ward off an opponent when the ball is loose. So, uh, without getting into unnecessary, uh, excessive roughness, when the ball is loose, all bets are off in the sense that you can just grab, kick and pull, try to, try and get to that, to that ball. Um, a defensive player may also use unlocked hands, hands or arms to ward off an opponent. Um, push, pull or ward off an opponent in an actual attempt to get at a runner. Um, a chop block is a block of a combination by two or more teammates against an opponent other than the runner with or without delay. When one of the blocks is below the waist and one of the blocks is above the waist. So the chop block, high, low, we talked about that and then in looking at that, um, if blocking below the waist is made at the initial contact below the waist from the front or side against an opponent other than the runner, it's legal at the time of the snap, but after that it's an illegal block. Um, interlocking blocks occurs when one player grabs or encircles a teammate just prior to or while blocking an opponent. So if, if they grab and, and they're intertwined with their arms, which I haven't personally seen, um, it would, it would be good, but here's it, here's the key one that we continue to talk about. It continues to be a point of emphasis. Article 10 and section three of rule two. A blind side block is a block against an opponent other than the runner who does not see the blocker approaching. So article 10, it is a, is a point of emphasis. It has been a point of emphasis. It will continue to be a point of emphasis because it's a safety issue. And we continue to talk about blind side blocks and you'll see in our huddle videos that we have a couple of blind side. What is, what isn't a blind side? And we'll talk more about that. So definition, blind side block. A blind side block is a block against an opponent other than the runner who does not see the blocker approaching. That's the definition. It's good if you know that definition verbatim. So you can talk to a coach and tell the coach why you called this, why this was a personal foul, blind side block. Is because the block happened and the opponent didn't see it. And then as we get into the rule, we'll see that it has to be with open hands. If they do it with open hands, then we're okay. But if he doesn't do it with open hands, doesn't see it coming, we got a problem. And those are the ones that we continue to see. Moving on, section four, cats.
When you go back, you say all bets are off, all bets are off. In the rural area, uh, our schools are smaller. Their big kids at school are smaller. Okay. When you say all bets are off, when you go back to that article 10 and then you similar to kind of don't guess at this, but you see a blind side block and you're stuttering, you're trying to explain to the white hat. And then all of a sudden you, you, you just, you get confused yourself. You, you know what I mean? Pretty much, I guess, I hope so.
I, I, I understand and, and, um, so if, if you, i- if you see something that doesn't look right and, and the things that we'll show you in the, in the videos are such that you see what we call swimmers swimming the wrong way. They're not going with the current. They are, they are motoring so fast and they're not on a trajectory to the ball, but on a trajectory to a person that, that it might catch your eye and you see that, then you can go to your white hat. If you throw it, go to your white hat. It's okay to take a deep breath. I know we want to keep the, the ball rolling. You know, per se, we want to keep everything moving, but it's okay to take a breath and, and, and play it in your mind what you saw. And, and, and talk it through with the white hat.
Okay. And I think, I think the key on the blind side block, which has definitely been a point of emphasis for several years now and, and will continue to be, um, is leading with the open hands. If they light, if a guy lights somebody up and he's leading with open hands, well, it's likely, it's likely a legal block. And you can explain it that way. But if he comes in with his shoulder or, uh, you know, takes him out and the guy doesn't even know he's there, then you can say, hey, coach, you didn't lead with open hands. And what I do, if I see, if I see somebody leading with open hands, I'll tell the coach, I'll say, that's exactly the way we want it taught. That's, that's a perfect, I call it a legal blind side block, if you will, sometimes.
Okay. And so, and, and we'll get into rule nine, four, three, and I think it is eh, eh, during the rules, the rules part two. So.
And we, we probably should be moving along a little, little quicker.
Yeah. Right.
Now wait till we get into that, uh, later on then.
Um, so article, section four, catch, a catch is an act establishing a player possession of a live ball, which is in flight and first contacting the ground in bounds while maintaining possession of the ball or having a forward progress of player in possession. So what's a catch? What's not a catch? Article one of section four talks about a catch, uh, non-catch. If you're a wing, you're going to want to know what a catch is and whether or not, what a catch isn't. It'll also be helpful. If you're a U, you're going to need to know that stuff too. I mean, everybody needs to know these definitions, but there's certain things that we can start covering each other on. The wing should really know what a catch is. Um, we talked about section five and clipping and blocking in the back. Um, clipping is a block against an opponent when the initial contact is from behind at or below the waist. We used to see for old school guys, we saw clipping all the time called. And, and it's not called that much anymore because it is at or below the waist behind the player. It's very rare that we see that. However, we do see blocking in the black, back. Blocking in the back is a block against an opponent when the initial contact is in the opponent's back, inside the shoulders and below the helmet, above the waist and not against a player who is a runner or pretending to be a runner. So knowing these definitions helps you again, communicate to your white hat, communicate to your coaches, especially you wings that are having to deal with those coaches barking at you all the time. If, if you're able to, to know these definitions and you can give them back to them, uh, wi- with the, usually they'll, they're not into the rule book like we are most of the time. You might find a coach that really knows his rules. Most of the time they don't. And, and if you are able to give them those rules and give them these definitions, it really helps with making the game a little smoother for you. Encroachment, section eight occurs when a player is illegally in the neutral zone during the time interval, starting at the ready for play until a ball is snapped or free kick. As in, um, it's six, one, three, which is deals with kicks. For the purpose of enforcing encroachment restriction and entering the substitute is not considered to be a player until he is on the team's side of the neutral zone. Encroachment also occurs when a player violates the free kick restriction zone. So encroachment is they, they line up in the neutral zone. Um, fighting, uh, pretty self-explanatory. Fighting is any attempt by a player or non-player to strike or engage a player. And here's the key, engage. They may throw a helm, you know, eh, a punch and they totally miss. Well, that's still considered fighting and it's still considered to be able to be a, uh, an ejection. Uh, or disqualification. I, I'm really trying to work on my terms. So, uh, we don't have injections. We have disqualifications. We don't have ne- unnecessary roughness. We have roughing penalties. We have blind side blocks. We have, um, a menagerie of o- other terms, but unnecessary roughness is not in, eh, eh, as a rule is not in the rule book. Um, uh, forward progress is important to our wings. Forward progress, section 15 is the end of advancement of the ball towards the opponent's goal in a runner's possession or the forward most point of the ball when it is fumbled out of bounds and determined to be a dead ball spot. Again, when an airborne player makes a catch, forward progress is the furthest point of advancement after he possesses the ball and contacted by a defender. So it's the end of the advancement. That's why when we have a player that goes forward and then all of a sudden there's a big pile and he doesn't get taken to the ground and he gets ran back, we give that forward progress. Forward progress, section sixteen, of the, the furthest point are the end of the advancement of the ball. Um, section sixteen fouls, um, article one, a foul is a rule infraction for which a penalty is prescribed. And we have a lot of penalties that we can prescribe. Um, there's also types of fouls or dead ball fouls, double fouls, flagrant. I want to emphasize flagrant here. A foul so severe or extreme that it places an opponent in danger of serious injury and or involves violation that are extremely or pursuant, are, are persistently vulgar or abusive conduct. So it, a blind side block can be flagrant and it, and so being flagrant can let rise to the level of disqualification. It doesn't have to have to like unsportsmanlike conduct. If, if it happens and it's, and we deem it's flagrant enough, we can then disqualify that player and, 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 and send the point home that we're not going to be tolerating this type of play. So flagrant is, is a important definition to know. There's live ball fouls which occurred during the down, multiple fouls, which are two or more live ball fouls. Other than non-player, unsportsmanlike are committed during the same down by the same team. At such time that the offending team is permitted a choice of penalties. So if the foul occurs against you, we have multiple fouls. The coach has a choice of which foul he wants to, to, uh, to take. Um, a player, there's fouls against players, there's fouls against non-players or unsportsmanlike fouls. Um, there's post scrimmage fouls and they're simultaneous with the snap. An act which becomes a foul when the ball is snapped or free kick as in encroachment or a false start. It, it kills the ball at the moment of, of the snap. So, um, moving on, the free kick block zone. Uh, what I wanted to talk here was article one, the free kick block zone is a rectangular area. This is the free, free, I'm sorry, the free blocking zone, the free blocking zone. And this is the zone around the tackle and it'll, it'll talk to just specifically. Article one of the section seventeen, the free blocking zone is a rectangular area extended laterally four yards either side of the spot of the snap and three yards behind each line of scrimmage. A player is in the free blocking zone and any part of his body is in the zone at the snap. Now it is possible with these, with these large splits, some of these teams run, especially these passing teams, they run these large splits that they will have their tackles outside the free blocking zone. So some of these fouls that are permitted at the snap in the free blocking zone are not permitted by these players that are outside. So understanding that the free blocking zone is a four yard on either side of the ball and three yards front and back. Understanding that rectangular and being able to tell a coach, coach, he was not allowed to do that because he's out outside of the free blocking zone. Um, block below the waist are permitted in the free blocking zone when the following conditions are met. All players involved in the block are on the line of scrimmage and in the zone at the snap. The contact is in the zone and the block is immediate initial action following the snap. It happens at the snap immediately. And that's why it's a dangerous zone being a lineman inside there, but i- if a player does a, a block below the waist at the snap and they dive, that's a legal block. That's, that's legal at the snap in the free blocking zone. The, the receivers outside of those free blocking zones can't do it. Those, those big guys in the middle can. I'm going to move on to the helmet contact. Um, helmet contact is illegal. Helmet contact is an act of initial contact with the helmet against an opponent. There are several types of legal helmet contact. Butt blocking is an act by any player who initiates contact against an opponent who is not a runner with the front of his helmet. So they're butting with the front of their helmet. Face tackling is an act by a defensive player who initiates contact against a runner with the front of his helmet. Spearing is an act by any player who initiates contact against an opponent at the shoulders or below with the crown or top portion of his head. So understanding this, now we talked about targeting a lot, the last point in last year's. Targeting is an act by any player who takes aim and initiates contact against an opponent above the shoulders with the helmet, forearm, hand, fist, elbow or shoulders. So targeting, we talk about uh, textbook targeting. Well, textbook targeting is anything, it's above the head. It's any portion of the body. So targeting, again, targeting is an act by any player who takes aim and initiates contact against an opponent above the shoulders with the helmet, forearm, hand, fist, elbows or shoulders. So understanding the difference between illegal helmet contact and targeting is important. And that way you can communicate these. Um, moving on, the neutral zone. Neutral zone is not article twenty, the neutral zone. The coolest thing about this is that they're in alphabetical order. The neutral zone is article or section twenty-eight. Um, then I want to talk about article one and article two. The neutral zone is the space between the two free kick lines during a free kick down and between the two scrimmage lines during a scrimmage down. Article two goes into the neutral zone may be expanded following the snap up to a maximum of two yards behind the defensive line of scrimmage. Inside the boundary lines during any scrimmage down, if there is a scrimmage kick occurs, the neutral zone shall not be expanded into the end zone. So we talked about the expansion of the neutral zone. So when you see in the rules expansion of the neutral zone, understanding a neutral zone is important. And finally, we're going to go into section thirty-two, the player designation. Now there are sixteen articles that talk about player designation, what a player is. The article one starts off, a player is one of twenty-two team members who is designated to start either half of the game or subsequently replace another player. So it talks about an offensive blocker, a disqualified player, a kicker. So it goes into, but I wanted, there is article sixteen talks about a defensive player and there's H, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, and there are A through H examples of a defensive, defensive less player. And a defensive less player is a player who because of his, of his physical position and focus or concentration is established, eh, especially vulnerable to injury. A player who initiates contact, contact against a defenseless player is responsible for making legal contact when in question a player is defenseless. So it's the responsibility of the player making contact to make legal contact against a defenseless player. Examples of defensive players are a passer, a receiver attempting to make a catch of a pass who has had no time to clearly become a runner. The intended receiver of a pass and the action during are immediately following an interception or potential interception. A runner already in grasp of a tackler and whose forward progress has been stopped. A kicker or punter returner attempting to catch or recover a kick. One or one who has completed a catch or recovering has not had time to protect himself or has not clearly become a runner. A player on the ground, including a runner who has obviously given himself up and is sliding feet first. Usually this is our quarterbacks, but sometimes it's our running backs. A player obviously out of play or not in the immediate vicinity of the runner. And a player who receives a blind side block with forceful contact not initiated with open hands. So all, understanding what a defensive player is, helps us to better understand how to put out this, um, offense against this rule. So, so there's an offending player that's hit against the defensive player, understanding what a defensive player is and what a blind side block is, can help in creating a better communication between you and your team. And then better communication between you and the coaches on your sideline. That's what we're going to cover for rules and definitions today. Does anybody have any questions or comments about what we covered in rule two?
Just, this is Steve, a couple of quick comments. Um, you have to really be careful on turnovers. Okay? So if there's an interception or, uh, or a fumble recovered by the defense, that's a time where we can get tricked into something. So now you have an, an previous offensive player who is now a defensive player who pushes, maybe pushes a player in the back in order to get to the runner. Well, that offensive player used to have a different colored jersey, right? But now he can legally push somebody in the back to get to a runner. So that's the time when you can get tricked out of that. So that's the time when you can get tricked out of that. Another thing I wanted to mention, so be real careful on change of possessions, okay, make sure you keep offensive defense straight. Cause it's real easy to call a block in the back, which was legal on a turnover. Second point, blindside block, the title is misleading. Uh, the person being hit must have a chance to. Um, defend themselves, e- even if they see it coming, you can still have a blindside block. If a if a player comes in hard with the forearm or or elbow. And they hit him square on the shoulder, even if the guy sees it coming, it still can be a flag. Because it's a safety call, okay? If you see, you need to see the player adjust his body like, you know, he adjusts for the blow, he gets ready for the blow. Or he turns a little bit to absorb the blow, that would be okay, but if he can't see. It's not that he can't see it coming, he can see it coming, but he has to have time to adjust, does that make sense?
And we talked about when we talked to to coaches, uh, the the screen of a basketball player. Uh, i- if, what is, they always ask, what is he supposed to do then? Well, if he just stands there and he put the 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 blocker protects himself against that player that doesn't. See him standing there and who's gonna provide that block for that runner that's coming by him. If he stands there and and do his best initiates the contact. And the player runs into him and they. Then then we don't, we have nothing there at that point, right? Even though the the player wasn't focused on him, he was running in there, he got in the way. If he, as long as he's not rolling his shoulders and he's not, and and we'll go into the rule and they're they're in the. The casebook, it it really does go into definition, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
We need to move along, we probably need to move along, Brad.
Let the casebook talk into that, so. Next, we're gonna talk about Rule Nine in in the rulebook and what's also is. Um, what I use personally, I use the Reading Study Guide, it's out there. Um, they usually put one out every year, Steve's usually up on top of that, they put one out this year, Steve, forget.
I haven't ordered mine yet, I'll probably do it this week, but it's an excellent resource, it gets into topics very easily. It's it's a nice way to study topics.
So Rule Nine covers conduct of players and others. So Rule Nine is is it has a lot of our fouls in it and um. Section four, we're gonna talk about illegal contact, so in section four, there are eight articles. And it and it goes into uh, players shall not, and so all in these in section, in Article three. It it, the player or non-player shall. It it talks about all these different things that they shall do or really it's really shall not do, so um. Get in to nine, four, three, um, and get in. Get into nine, four, a- and it'll help you a lot, uh, if you're a also a you. Um, or even uh, uh, the wings nine, uh, three is the legal blocking. So right now, we're gonna talk about these blindside blocks, really hitting hard on the blindside block. Um, because it has been a point of emphasis and and it seems like we keep missing them and getting them wrong, so. The blindside block is no player shall execute. A blindside block outside of the free block zone with forceful contact unless initiated with open hands. The the Reading, Chapter Eight, I'm in in my re- guide right now in ninety-seven, it goes into. It it talks about what actions are appropriate and then it talks about what blocks are. So blocked by a player on the offense who initiates a peel block. Towards his own inline or crackback block or spot snapped, so that's a blindside block. Any other field block against an opponent whose primary focus is on the runner. Or the ball and who does not see the block coming, that's a blindside block textbook. And the Reading Guide goes further into examples and it'll have the examples that that. That the college guys are really used to in that we we talk about examples. Uh, it says B thirty is pursuing runner A twenty-two at the B forty. Eighty runs roughly parallel to the B forty, which is the yard line. And blocks B thirty with his shoulders. At the time of the block, B thirty was focused on A twenty-two and did not turn towards A eighty. Or visually prepare for contact as Steve had talked. And tried to war and or tried to ward off A eighty's block. Ruling is a foul in. A, which is the, didn't see the block coming because he did not see A eighty approaching, and then. In B, which. He actually tried to ward off the block coming at him is because he saw A eighty coming the block in when the block was initiated. So in one aspect, Reading, uh, Reading goes into. Uh, what's a foul and what's not a foul, it's a foul because he didn't see it coming. It's not a foul because he was able to look, prepare, and ward off the block that was coming at him. So, um, that's just different ways, different tools that you have out there, also Reading has. Uh, hundreds and hundreds of questions, a true or false questions, a multiple choi- choice questions. So I rec- I hi- I don't work for Reading, but I highly recommend Reading Study Guide as a as a tool for you. Um, targeting opponent, uh, we're gonna go into nine, four, three, M, if you have your tool, uh, your rulebook with you. Nine, four, three, M. It says, this says basically shall not target an opponent, well, now we we would go back into what's targeting, we talked about what's targeting. Targeting is the different hits uh, uh, above and with the the helmet or not, you know, above the head. So they shall not target, right, it's pretty cut and dry, but we need to understand what targeting is, that's what goes back into our definitions. Um, again, horse collar, we're gonna, I I'm covering these rules because we're gonna see them in our huddle. Um, no player shall grab the inside or back. So grab the inside or side collar or the nameplate area, this is new from two years ago. Directly below the collar or either the shoulder pads or the jersey of the runner and subsequently pulled backwards. Or sideways, that's new wording too, that opponents to the ground, so there's the key. Pulling backwards or sideways to the opponent to the ground. Horse collar, even if possession is lost, the horse collar foul is enforced as a live ball foul. So the key to that, what we understand is that. It's to opponent to the ground, so if they stop him. And they release him and the player's still able to to fall forward or what have you. We don't necessarily have a for- a a horse collar. And 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 people will see that initial horse collar, they'd be yelling for a horse collar, but if we're able to. Talk this rule and say, coach, according to the rule, you didn't bring him to the ground. It doesn't matter if we brought him sideways or 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 backwards, didn't bring him to the ground. With that horse collar, he let it go, that's why we don't have a horse collar. And moving on, section three, illegal blocking a player, so now. We're talking about blocks now, cause we're gonna see that in our in our uh, video. Um, a player shall not block an opponent below the waist except in the free blocking zone, understanding, we talked about that in two seventeen. To tackle a runner or player pretending to be a runner, a player shall not block an opponent below the waist. To tackle a runner or player pretending to be a runner. So those are the two articles, um, it also goes into in Chapter Eight, and Chapter Eight talks about major fouls. Uh, in the reading guide, um, and and go if you, you can go from our rulebook. To our casebook, to our reading guide, and you can use all of these when you get together with your friend Carl. And 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 are able to go over rules. Um, section four, Article three, G, talks about making, uh, no player shall. Make contact with an opponent, including a defenseless player, which is deemed unnecessary or excessive. And which incites roughness, now, when we talk about unnecessary roughness, this is where, this is one of the few times where I see roughness. In the in the wording, but it's not in the rule, it's not. It's not, the the rule would be a defenseless player, a blindside block, uh, uh. What 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 did he do, what was the foul, it was the foul was a blindside block or or a. It was a flagrant foul, that way we can, if we can talk about that, then we can, we can. Move to those rules that we can do a disqualification and what have you, we can, um. We can then justify when we have to later on, um. So I wanted to talk about in the casebook, uh, in the twenty twenty-two casebook, we haven't gotten our rules books out on page. Eighty-one at the bottom, it talks about illegal personal contact. And I wanted to talk about this because it helps with understanding what we are moving towards. When we say illegal personal contact, this is new this year in the twenty twenty-two. Is there, the question becomes, is there a guide for game officials and coaches as to the application of nine, four, three, G? A defenseless player and what contacts should be considered excessive, particularly against a defensive player. Answer is yes, according to the casebook, while there is not universal agreement. Look, we all can't agree, we all see different plays, we all can see different things happening on the field. And especially at real time, it's even harder. So while there is not universal agreement on a specific list of items. Several have been identified as problematic, in particular. Uh, emphasis should be made on these acts, in addition to the general emphasis on the protection of defensive players. Particularly receivers, and this is where the wings come in, this is why it's wing centric this week. The receipt, we're really concentrating on those defenseless receivers, any player with a. Any play with a player executing forceful contact. The against a defenseless player receiver as defined in three thirty-two sixteen B. And three are two thirty-two sixteen C, going back to the definitions. That is not incidental as a result of playing the ball initial initiated with the open hands. Or wrap-up tackle should be carefully considered by the game official as a possible excessive act. What, when we see these plays happen, was the play, was the player trying to make a tackle? Did he use open hands? Did he lower his shoulder, now we got the, it was the, what did, was the ba- the receiving player able to defend themselves? All these things happened in a split moment. And and that's why we can, we can throw a flag, we can look it in our mind, we can talk it over. And if we have to pick up that flag, we can pick up that flag, but if, but if. If we see something that doesn't look right, probably isn't right. So we should probably get those and and just open up our view, if we see those players running upstream and you'll see him in the video. We need to open up our eyes and and identify, okay, that's that's a good block, that's a good block, okay, this guy's. Something, this guy's head hunting, he's been head hunting since, you know, for a while, so we're gonna, um. We're gonna move on and, uh. So that's just different ways of looking at studying, looking at the reading guide, looking at the penalties that we have. Um, and then for then hopping into the casebook to 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 get more definitions into to it, so. Using all those tools is is awesome, so now we're gonna go into um, our. Test question portion of it, and what I'll, what I want, what I wanted to share here is. If you haven't already and you have a smartphone, you can you can download on your smartphone, you can, I think you can download on your computer, the Rules App that. That the Federation High School Rules App, you don't have to have the books to take the quiz, down here, there's quizzes for all sports. Football is in there and you can take as many quizzes, the quizzes are ten questions, so you can go back and take another one, another ten questions and those. And once you take these questions, you'll see these questions later on in the in the rules uh, test that we have to take. In September and and in August and September when those rules tests come out. These are the exact questions that are coming out and and you're gonna see some of these. Test questions that we have from our bank, so Carl's gonna take over that portion of it, and there you go, Carl.
You're driving, okay, so I think for sake of time, we won't go through all of them. What we've done is we've put together ten, we'll do ten per session. And we'd like, you know, ideally, everybody could try to answer these. And I think I'll just pick two, a couple maybe for now, and then we'll, when we roll this up and send it out to everybody. Uh, we'll have all the answers to it, so let me just pick, pick one here and you, somebody just just uh, just go ahead and shout out the answer, so. What's that?
Just to be clear, so what's Carl saying is that we're gonna create a PDF of the slides here. And we're gonna send that PDF out to everybody that was on the call here.
Right, so. A block against an opponent other than the runner who does not see the blocker approaching is a chop block, what's the answer?
False.
False, right on, so let's go to another one. And you don't have to go, I'll just read these, so it and and it'll be quicker that way. An inadvertent whistle does not end the down, true or false?
False.
False. A forward underhand pitch behind the neutral zone from A one to A two is an incomplete pass if not caught, true or false?
True.
Behind then, and even though it's, and it's behind the neutral zone, so it's just a, it's basically an incomplete pass. And here's the last one I'll go over, and this was Brad touched on this quite a bit, what are the two key elements that constitute a blindside block? What are they? The two key elements that constitute a blindside block.
Defenseless.
That's that's part of one of them, yes.
Using forearm, uh, something other than extended hands and he doesn't see it coming.
And it's above the shoulder.
A a block against an opponent who does not see the blocker approaching and forceful contact not with open hands.
Yes.
It can also do a basketball screen, that's the best way to coach that.
Right, so with that, let's go ahead and go in, and so, um. You wanna release your uh, your viewing there, Brad, and then I'll see if I can take control and we'll look at some huddle clips. Okay, so I go. Where do I see share screen, share screen? Okay, can you see that?
Can everybody see that? Yes, yes.
This is a play where, this is the third play of the first game. Of the of of the season, this last season, this, and the the emphasis here is. You gotta be ready for anything, okay, and you may have seen this on the top tip, one of the top tens, I submitted it for one of the top tens and it made it. Um, but you gotta be ready for anything, so, yeah, we'll go ahead and play this one. And these will stop on an arrow, so it kinda draws your attention to a particular player, okay? Boom. So let me go back to that one. Okay, so I'll, uh. So what would you call here, you make the call, guys, what what's your call? He's gonna light this dude up. Boom. What's your call? Anybody, don't be bashful.
Helmet too.
So what, at at a minimum, what do we have here?
Personal foul.
Personal foul, absolutely, this is at a minimum a fifteen yarder if nothing else. Would you go even harder on this one, would you? Would you deem this flagrant, targeting with flagrant?
No, no, it's good cause the crown of the helmet.
Used his hands. Okay, let's see, uh. So we'll step through this. He's lowering his head, it's a defenseless player, he's hitting. Boom, see his head? Boom, he lit him up, right? So, does anybody think it's. Targeting with a with a flagrant in nature?
Can be, it's above the shoulders in my opinion, and it's the crown of the helmet.
So here's the thing. Would this affect your decision? This is the third game. I mean, the third play, it's the first game of the season, so we're gonna throw him out for this game and throw him out for the next game. Sure.
Hmm.
Does that affect your decision?
Player safety happens from beginning of the season to the end of the season.
Shouldn't.
Okay, shouldn't weigh in, okay, good discussion, good discussion, all right. Anything else? We'll move on to the next one, we'll try to go through these. Okay, so this is uh, again, this is your uh pre-snap stuff with the wings is the emphasis here. So just keep an eye on this guy down here. Okay, so he's calling. False start. So why is it a false start?
Cause he put his hand on the ground.
He put his hand on the ground and it says in the rule book, and I think Brad, you read near or on the ground.
Yep, so article, rule seven, article seven. After the ball is ready for playing, before the snap begins, no false start shall be made by any A player. Is a false start if a shift or feign charge simulates the action of the snap. Any act is clearly intended to cause B to encroach. Any A player on his. Line between the snapper and the player on the end of the line after having placed a hand. On or near the ground moves his hand or makes any quick movement.
Okay.
We can't move his hand up and down.
So did that say had to be on the line or near the line?
Um.
He was off the line.
He was on the line after placing a hand on or near the ground.
So he's off the line, the the wings punching back. Yeah, he's a back, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't be the penalty. You're basically saying that his movement is kind of. Starting the act of a play, right?
Yeah.
He can pull it off.
Yeah.
He's, he's a back.
So he's not swinging his arm isn't gonna constitute a false start, right? Just swinging his arm.
Yeah, go back to the beginning of that play, you'll see he's punching back, the wings punching back, he's counted as off, right, there's the punch. Okay, and he's got, you got four in the backfield. I mean, now he's barely back, but. You see?
Yep.
He is probably communicated to that wing official that he's off. And that wing official said, okay, you're off. See, he could go in motion right there.
You get too many in the backfield because the the two receivers are lined up directly across from each other. He can't go in motion if his hands down. If he puts his hand on the ground, he can't stand up and go in motion.
Are you gonna tell me a running back can't do that?
Running back can't do it either.
Why not?
Hmm.
Because his hands in the ground, in the high school rules, if his hand touches the ground, he cannot.
If he's on the line. Not on the line.
Uh, okay, I'll read it again, I'll read it again. Any A player on his line. Between the snapper and the player on the end of his line. After having placed a hand on or near the ground, moves his hand or makes any quick movement. So any player on his line is the is the quote there. And the player on the end of his line.
Interior lineman.
Interior lineman.
Now, if I saw, I've seen that, I've seen that flag get thrown at a couple of times.
Well, that's why we're talking definitions.
It's good dis- good discussion point, good discussion point.
And the end or running backs can pick their hands up.
As long as they don't faint a snap. Like if they jerk up, they can have the hand, but if they jerk up and they pull a guy, that's a false start.
Yep. Well, he stood, he took a step forward after he stood up, so.
Okay. With the guy who, who said it was different.
All right. Okay, so. The next one is another dead ball call. Okay, so. Look at the, look at the defensive player, the left tackle, he's probably lined up in the neutral zone, it's what it kinda looks like to me. So we'll watch the, we'll watch the H. So here, the H appears to be ready for a flag for encroachment on the defense. He's got his hand right on his flag. And then he kills it. So. I think the point there is if. If they're lined up in the neutral zone, we like to try to talk to them first, right? Try to talk them out of it. Maybe the next play, say, hey, you guys need to back up a half yard or something, you know? But if you're gonna kill it, for encroachment, you need to kill it before the ball snap or immediately when the ball snap. Not let any kind of a play happen, right?
He, he was a little late with the plug.
So, I mean, yeah, we're, maybe we're splitting hairs here, but if that's what's happening, he's lined up and they're just, just kill that puppy.
Was there an advantage gained? That should be part of your decision. Was there an advantage gained?
For him being lined up in the neutral zone?
No, well, if you're deciding whether you're gonna kill it or not.
Right.
Just talk to him.
I, yeah, I, that's what I mean. I, I think as officials, we need to know where ours, where our line is. And I, I personally like to talk them out of it. Now, by the third or fourth quarter, are we still talking them out of it? Probably not.
No.
I don't talk them out of it at all, that's, that's something to get out of.
Okay, we'll get to the next play here. Okay, so this one. All right, we had, we've got a missed, we've got a missed something here. Definitely missed something, pretty big. And it's gonna stop on an arrow. All right, so what do we, what could be happening here?
This, oh, blind side block.
Swim, you got a guy swimming upstream.
Okay, all right. So we'll go slow motion. Boom. Everybody catch that? First of all, do we, is there a foul?
Yes, defenseless player.
Okay, defenseless player does not see the guy coming, and he's certainly not leading with open hands. Now, who could have caught this foul?
The U.
The U?
Okay. Look, should be looking right at it.
And what about the back judge? Does he have a shot at it perhaps? Maybe even the H has a shot at it. I think the L is gonna be focused on the runner and a. I mean, ahead of the runner, immediately ahead of the runner.
Back that up again, back that up again.
Back it up?
Yeah.
You wanna go slow motion? It looks like the back judge might be looking here. The, the, the H is, I mean, the L is, this is where he should be focused, although. You don't wanna get too focused, you wanna have a little bit of a wider view, but again. There's a lot of energy right here.
The back judge is too deep, I think he's thirty, almost thirty at the snap. And that's part of it, there's a lot of traffic, but the back judge has gotta be twenty.
It should actually be the umpire coming across, he sits still, I don't know why he's sitting out there, middle of the field when the ball's. Going towards.
Watching the action, he's watching.
Backside of the play, the. Judges secondary blocks, which is up at the ten.
Your head linesman should have that cleanup at the twenty five. The umpire should have bananaed around and had that blindside block.
So. So just something to be aware of.
I don't appreciate that. Because I was watching the, the guard getting ready to get smashed over here like he did a play before that, but, okay, I'll go with you.
No, you know what, we should have opened with a, to a certain point with a caveat, we're not intending to draw any attention to anybody.
I understand.
That's one thing about five man crew, that that's, it's tough to, who has what?
Okay, now it was clearly you were focused on those guys, like you had problems with them before, no problem.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, that one kid was snatching him back by the collar, but yeah, I, when I watched the first, when I first watched it, yeah, I could have figured it out if I looked over there.
And if we had radios, you could have gotten to the headlinesman and say, hey, help me keep an eye on this, and then you could have come off it a little bit earlier.
Maybe the white hat could have helped too, I don't.
Yeah, he should have been. I'm not gonna tell you who it was.
We're not drawing any attention to anybody here.
That's right, exactly.
So, okay, all right. Okay, now we have a. He's, 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 he's swimming downstream, but he's swimming downstream against somebody that doesn't see him coming, I think.
Be a block in the back.
Boom, now, it wasn't, it was in the shoulder, do you have a foul here, potentially?
That's a dead ball foul.
Late.
Yes. That's a dead ball foul.
Well, and he's really around the pile and head hunting.
I think what you're saying, there's no reason for this, this hit at all.
And he's, like I said, he's head hunting around the pile, those are usually late and those are fouls.
And so.
What kind of foul are you calling now? What, what are we, what are we looking at?
Personal foul.
Personal foul.
Dead ball, personal foul?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, it wasn't called. Okay.
If this, if, let me ask you something, just a second, Carl, just to throw the, the devil's advocate in there, if. If this guy had been doing these head hunting and this is like the third personal foul that we've called on him and. Personal files aren't like UCs, UCs are a dead ball, you know. Non-playing foul. Um. Do, do we, and we've already talked to this kid and and the coach. Are, are we looking at maybe calling a flagrant foul on him now to say, hey, look, we talked to you. You know what you're doing wrong, you continue to do it, we, you know, this is a flagrant and now we're, we're looking at a, a disqualification. Is that, is that something that we could? Keep a, keep a tally on or add? And our cards?
It's a, that's, that's a game situation.
Yeah, and Brad, this exact question came up, as many of you know, some of us are on here from Colorado and New Mexico and. The guy who writes the reading book, George Dimitrio, is an active official in Colorado. And this question came up when I was at a meeting with him and he said, nope, just keep, keep throwing flags. He said, that's. Not under our purview, basically. If you wanna talk to the coach and say, hey, coach, that's three PFs, great. But he said, that's, it's really, he, that was his flat, easy answer, keep, nope, just keep throwing flags on him, that's not. We're not to count them up and decide you've finally reached a limit. And as a soccer official, we have that, but we don't in football. Good coach will pull, a good coach will pull that player for a, a number of plays and cool him down.
Yeah, we had a, we had, we had a guy, we had a game like that too, and they kept wanting me to throw the guy out, he was coming down. Doing a, he was bringing his hands to do a crackback, but he stuck his head in first. On and cracked back on the end, and it was like a budding. I flagged him on it, flagged him a second time, flagged him a third time, the guy said, weren't you gonna kick him out? I said, no, just gonna keep flagging him. Because I've already told him not to use his head anymore, so, coach, you better tell him to stop using his head.
So the, the definition of flagrant does have um. Persistent or what's the word? I don't have it in front of me, but it does have it to where it's, if there's multiple times. The only time I've had a game where I've had it is, I had the exact same player, play after play after play, do it. To where I, I had to go tell the coach, that coach, if he does that again, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say that's persistent, um. And I'm gonna flagrant, but I, I warned the coach beforehand, if there were, if there were plays in between there, I wouldn't. Use that persistent definition of flagrant to define something to, to throw a kid out.
Good point. Maybe that'll come, if, if it becomes some kind of a nationwide federation issue, then maybe they'll say, uh, you know, three. Three PFs and you're gone or something.
Right, so, so yeah, you're right, a foul is so severe extreme that is places an opponent in danger or serious injury. And or involves violations that are extremely or persistently vulgar or abusive conduct. So i- i- it's a, it doesn't necessarily persistent vulgar, but it is persistent abusive conduct. Um, if they continue to do the same personal foul over and over, then we could. Certainly talk to the, to the um, fact that it, this has become flagrant. And we talked about, you know, mockery of the game, I think is the call or there's.
Travesty of the game.
travesty of the game, there you go, and so, you know, we could also throw into that rule. A little bit, so definitions do count.
Good discussion. Okay. So what are the earmarks, hallmarks of this one?
He's drawing a bead on a guy.
So he's swimming upstream, right? So. We'll go slow through this one. Let me back it up. Yeah, come on now, back it up. Stop it, okay, here we go. So he, does he know he's there? Not, not at that point. Does he turn at the last second?
Yeah.
Is he leading with open hands? Doesn't look like it. So what, what do you, do you have a call here?
I believe you do. Blindside block.
Yes, sir.
So. Blindside block as opposed to say a block in the back or a no call, okay?
No, it was more shoulder than back, so it's blindside.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we passed on this one.
Well, I think for me, and I'm, I'm not as experienced as most of you guys. For me, one thing I learned in the camp from a couple guys is, see how the sideline judge is walking up line? I've had to learn to stand still a little bit longer, because if not, you're not looking at the whole wide play right there. And you do, I, I do miss it if I, if I'm moving.
And that, that's a great point. That was certainly something emphasized at the forum by Sarah Thomas, the NFL official, said. Move with a purpose and then stop wherever you're at.
In the, in the super slow motion version, you can see number five kinda duck his shoulder. As the guy gets ready to hit him.
So he knows it's coming.
Real life.
Oh, yeah, he, he can see it coming, he, he turned right at the last second and. A lot of people get, get fooled that way.
But I would question that he's turning to take a different angle to make a tackle, not to take.
Well, no, not, no, no, not, yeah, no, not to make the tackle, I think he's, I think he's turning because he knows he's gonna get hit.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, remember, we're looking at this in slow motion, you have to make a full, real-time speed decision on the field.
Well, yeah. Regular speed, you'll never see that guy go, oh, I'm.
Yeah, good point, good discussion.
That's what you're looking for.
I'm thinking it's a block in the back, because they're both moving in the same direction.
Just for being a player, you can see, you can, I've seen players. See players coming, make that turn, just be, just because they catch them out of peripheral vision coming, and they make that turn. I, it, it's just like when I start, when I started as officiating, they told me to reduce my focus to the backfield. When I'm used to paying linebacker and I can spread my focus out as wide as I wanted to go to take up the whole field. But I'll bring it down as much as you want me to, but players know what, players have vision, they know what's coming and what's not coming, that's Barry Sanders.
Yeah, and I think Mike, you said it was a block in the back, correct?
Yeah, I'm thinking because the, both players are moving in the same direction, they weren't going up, you know, they didn't come back on him, he wasn't swimming upstream, so. And certainly it was a block in the back at, at a minimum, but I, I blindside, I'm not, even though the player may or may not have seen him.
I would say for me, though, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, but I think it could be both ways. I would say for me, though, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, but I think it could be both ways, and I think either one's correct call, because. At the same time, watching it on film, when you're on the field, you know you have a feel for that game and what's happening in that game. And you kinda get a feel for intent also.
Right.
So, uh, the obvious difference between the two, uh, block in the back's a ten yard penalty, blindside's fifteen, so.
But why couldn't it be a clip, it's in the bit, it, it could be, I'm just saying it could be, because it is between the shoulders, it looks like he hits, hits the five.
It's above the waist.
Is, is below the waist.
Low, that's what the definition said, okay.
Yeah, below the waist.
So it's, yeah. What was the review, uh, because the guys did review this, right, what was their, what was their decision?
There was no.
No. It, it didn't get reviewed, this is just a regular, this was just a regular high school game, there was no value here, so.
Okay, I was just curious. Valuated there. If we hadn't evaluated, they would have determined that that was a good call, calling a blindside block.
It was.
There, and we looked at safety.
It's a, it was a no call, we passed on this. No call was made. So. Okay, here we go, we got four left, and I think we, we've got some four good ones. Okay, so we gotta, let's give you a hint, this is a couple of HC's coming. Back this.
Yeah, I jumped that.
The play up, hold on, back it up, and then I will slow motion when I get there. So, did you have an interpretative, an initial at full speed? All right, here we go. So what do we need for an HC? The first criteria, is it met?
Yes, it is, shoulder pattern, nameplate.
Right there, he's got him right by the horse, the actual horse collar, it looks like to me. And he's pulling him back, his knees are buckling, it doesn't say knees buckling in the rules. Says, pulled sideways or backwards to the ground. So the back judge did flag it. But, somebody talked him out of it, because he picked his flag up.
We have a terrible view, but it looks like he goes forward.
Yeah, it looks like he falls forward.
Yeah.
And if he falls forward, it's not a horse collar.
Yep.
Are you waiting, we're gonna have those coaches yelling at you, that guy got horse collared, that guy got horse collared.
I was told by Ken that you can't have a horse collar. If everything else has been met and he still goes forward, it's still keep, still call it a horse collar.
No, it's not true.
Ken told me that, so.
No, it's, the definition, he's got, he, it looks like he goes forward, we just don't have good video.
Yeah, I, I, again, to frame myself, that's me running back behind him, and you can see that I grabbed my flag. But I let it go because I saw him go forward.
So, he, he, the back judge did flag it, but then he picked his flag up. Okay, we got another HC. Call or no call? This is, this is me. For some reason, I passed on it, so we're gonna find out what y'all think.
The hell, do you, do you figure out who's gonna be on this thing, you just thought you just throw them in there, or?
No, I picked most, most of these are games that I did.
It's like he's out of bounds right there, Carl.
No, no, actually, well, it doesn't, if he's out of bounds, it doesn't affect a horse collar. Yeah, I know, I had a hor- I had a horse collar in the, in the end zone.
Wow.
So, yeah, it doesn't affect the, whether it's a, still a personal foul.
No, it's good he had those white shoes on and he's stepping on a hash at the same time, that made that real easy.
Right.
No, actually, you know what, there was a quarter in.